Okay, we're live.
See us on YouTube Live, yay, thanks so much.
I'm so sorry. But here we are.
So we're 6:02.
Okay, if we're up and running, we can open, go ahead and open the meeting, get started. I would ask that if it's not your moment to talk, if you'd please make sure your phone is muted. And I see everybody is muted, so I really appreciate that.
Yes, sir. All right, we'll call this meeting to order.
There's a few lines on that script, I believe, for you to read.
Bear with me, yes, sir, bear with me one second.
Oh, no problem, I'm sorry.
Today is Tuesday, August the 18th, 2020, it is 6:02 PM. This is an eight-member board appointed by the City of South Fulton, mayor and council to hold public hearings to make recommendations on rezonings, use permits, and concurrent variance applications, comprehensive land use plan map, and amendments to the zoning resolution. Citizens may speak for or against a zoning issue, and each side will have up to 10 minutes total to present each case. Tonight's virtual meetings, citizens may enter their comments and questions in the YouTube chat or email, planning@cityofsouthfultonga.gov. The Planning Commission's recommendations will be forwarded to the city's mayor and council for final decision on the fourth Tuesday of the next month. We will proceed to the first item on the agenda.
Excuse me, Commissioner Hadley, can you state today's date as September 15th, please?
Excuse me, today is Tuesday, September the 15th, 2020.
Thank you.
Can we have the roll called?
Yes, uh, let's see here. Bear with me one second. All right, so, Janee Brown. Rodney Hadley.
Present.
Shannon Jones.
Present.
Janai Walters.
Present.
Shatika Floyd.
Present.
Tamika Waverly. And Ms. Rachel, I'm not seeing her last name, Rachel Williams. All right, Shannon, we do have a call.
All right, if we can proceed, approval of the minutes, the regular minutes from Tuesday, August the 18th of 2020. Has everyone had a chance to, to review the minutes?
Yes.
Yes.
Can we have a recommendation?
This is Commissioner Walters, I'd like to make a motion to approve the minute. That's from the last month's session, August meeting.
All right, we have a approval of the minutes.
Shatika Floyd, a second.
All right, so I'll do the, um, the call. Um, Shatika Floyd. This would be the vote for yea or nay.
Yes.
All right, Rodney Hadley.
Yes.
Shannon Jones.
Yay.
Janai Walters.
Yay.
All right, the vote is unanimous.
Old business. We do not have any. New business. A public comment for each case, 10 minutes are reserved for those speaking in favor of each case, and another 10 minutes are reserved for those speaking in opposition to each case. Please state your name, address, and the council district within which your home resides. We're not ready for this portion now, are we?
No, not right now, we'll do public comments after the, after I present each case and after the applicant speaks. So if we're ready, we can speak on the first case. Okay, Z20001, I'm sorry.
Are you, please continue.
Oh, I'm sorry, Z20001 is a rezoning for 6705 Camp Valley, Marissa, we go to the next slide. Uh, this was a postponement from last month to complete a stra- traffic study that was done. Um, this is a rezoning from SH to TR Town Home Residential in order to build a residential development. Uh, the proposal here fits in with the area quite well, there is adjacent TR zoning, and it is a fully developed residential area, and the staff recommendation is for approval here. We go to the next slide, please. You can see on the map on the left, our zoning map, the subject property is highlighted in blue, it's SH, and there's TR right next to it, and as you can see on the aerial map on the right, the one undeveloped parcel in the middle is this property, and then all around it is single-family residential. The next slide, please. This is a site plan for the proposed development, we have two site plans to look at. Both of them here show a change that was submitted this week in the addition of a traffic circle to help calm traffic there, and I am quite interested to hear how that's going to be worked in and how that came to be, so that would be my, my first question there. Um, and I believe, do we have another slide here? We do have some elevations, I believe. Um, sample elevations for homes, and sample elevations for townhomes, and those are the slides for this project, we can turn it over to any of the petitioners who are on the call to speak now.
Good evening, Michelle Battle with Battle Law, One West Court Square, Decatur, Georgia, 30030, here representing the applicant. Um, if you can go back to the site plan, at last, we discussed this particular project, I believe. We were presented with some challenges that the community had with the overall site, and this particular project, as indicated, is currently zoned SH for 251 units for senior housing. However, this project was never able to get up off of the ground for the senior housing project. Uh, my client currently owns the property, Pacific Group, and they are seeking to actually develop the property themselves, they are a experienced land developer, and with desire to develop the project as currently proposed. When we started this out, we had 164 units that we were proposing for both single-family and detached units, and, um, in the configuration roughly about what you're seeing in this particular site plan. However, after meeting with the community, we were told about concerns regarding the speed of traffic along Camp Valley Road, not so much the volume of traffic, but definitely the speed of the traffic, and that they had been reaching out to Clayton County to try and get some assistance, putting in speed humps, but Clayton County does not actually do speed humps, they believe that it is a risk that they are not willing to take, and they have made no headway with getting any type of, um, other deterrents to slow traffic down along that corridor. Um, after going out and meeting with them, and meeting with Commissioner Hambrick, and receiving comments back, um, from Councilmember Khalid, what we have proposed with the traffic study that you all received, is the traffic circle, and the purpose of the traffic circle is really kind of twofold, or maybe even threefold. Um, one, there's a very dangerous curve that the community had indicated is located along Camp Valley, it's almost in an L shape as you're coming around the corner, going down towards Campfire, and the community made it very clear that there have been a number of accidents, and including a recent one involving some county personnel coming around that corner. So, um, we are proposing the traffic circle as a way of slowing that traffic down, number one. Number two, it also straightens out that curve, so the curve is no longer prominent there, that should relieve some of the accidents and challenges with visibility coming around that curve. Um, but additionally, we just think that it adds, um, the traffic circle adds some aesthetic positives to the overall project, and definitely allows for more control of the traffic that will be entering and exiting from this community, and also trying to get into the properties off of Campfire Drive. Um, so we think that it was a win-win for everyone all around. We are, um, we feel like this is better than the installation of just a traffic signal there along Camp Creek, and we have had conversations with Clayton County with regards to the right-of-way, which I believe the majority of it belongs to them, and they have indicated, after their review of the traffic study, that they are supportive of the traffic circle. And so with that, we are proposing a total of 158 units now, the number of units did drop when we put in the traffic circle, the total number of units again is 158, we've got 86 single-family homes and 72 townhomes for a total density of 3.46 units per acre. Um, the townhomes, you've seen the elevations, those units will sell roughly in the high 100s to low 200s, and the single-family detached homes will sell for roughly the mid 200s to the low 300s is what we anticipate for those homes. We believe that this fits in very nicely with the community on surrounding it, particularly because there are other TR zonings with townhomes and single-family detached product nearby. We do only have that one point of access to road frontage off of Camp Valley, there was some question as to whether or not we could have access off of other roads, we cannot. Um, we do have wetlands that are located, along with stream buffers that we also have to maneuver around, we will be using above mentioned in the areas noted, and we respectfully recommendation of approval on this matter, thank you.
Michelle, this is Nathan, I have a quick question, if you would comment a little bit more about the traffic circle, you have approval from Clayton County to reroute that road into a traffic circle.
Yes, they have given us preliminary approval of that, obviously, there would be things we would have to work out if this were approved in terms of the abandonment of the right-of-way that is currently there, you know, who gets what, and what it will look like, we are proposing, obviously, that it would remain green space in that area, and that part of the roadway that's abandoned would be taken up.
I want to add that I did get an email today from our traffic engineer, saying that he has reviewed the traffic study, and the development goes over and above what he would require, um, said the proposal for the roundabout meets both the access need for the development, as well as addressing the speed complaints from the community, so we have a favorable review, if you want to say, from the city's traffic engineer. And if the board has any questions, it's their, their turn.
This is Rodney Hadley. What has the public's participation been since the, since the change with the?
Um, I went out and I met with the community, we had a community meeting via Zoom, and then I also went out and met with them on-site, along with Commissioner Hambrick. Um, since we have installed the traffic roundabout into the plan, I provided that to the community representative, Ms. Elaine Stubbs, I provided her with a copy of the site plan and a copy of the traffic study. Um, I did hear from her today, she indicated that the community, or at least the folks that she's been speaking with, were pleased with the traffic circle and felt that, that did address their issues. Um, she was not able to speak necessarily for everybody, but that was the comments that I did receive back from her today.
Yes, ma'am. Well, I think that's a great thing, if it adds value and is able to correct a, a problem and bring about some type of solution to the traffic, that is definitely a plus.
Do any of the other board members have any questions or comments before we move on to public comment? Um, Marissa and Dana, have you received any comments over YouTube or via the city's planning email address?
Yes, we have two comments for, from YouTube. The first one is from Councilman Khalid. He's asking, will there be signage posted on the road in advance of the roundabout traffic circle, for example, traffic circle ahead?
Um, we, we certainly will put whatever the city and the county require, um, I don't know that that technically is our call, but if that's what is requested, I'm sure that that would not be problematic.
The second question is from Marcellus1876, he's asking, explain to me how that's going to help with the volume of traffic?
Well, I think one of the things that roundabouts are helpful with is that it allows traffic coming in and out to, to circulate more and at a slower rate than what it would if you just had a straight access point that was perpendicular or directly across from Campfire Drive, that was one of the issues that the community had, was that the primary entrance that we had previously proposed was directly across from Campfire, so that kind of takes that out of that situation for them, but additionally, it kind of creates its own, um, traffic, uh, I don't want to call it realignment, but I guess just, it, it slows the pattern of traffic down as people are going around that circle. Um, I don't know how often anyone else in other parts of the city have actually gone through a, a roundabout, but it does slow traffic down, and it allows this traffic to kind of come in and out without as much delay, but also at a slower rate.
Yeah, Michelle, this is Nathan, I just want to second that, you know, planners love roundabouts for those reasons, number one, you know, imagine yourself driving through this, you're going to be forced to slow down, which is much safer for you and the other drivers than anyone who happens to be walking or biking, which is great, and it avoids the, I think perils is a strong one, but the perils of, of say, a light or a sign, where it's going to have the potential to be backed up, because the traffic circles are constantly moving, backups are naturally alleviated gradually, so traffic cannot build up to huge long delays, and it can keep moving at a safe rate of speed. Um, have any comments come into the planning email address, Dana?
Yes, um, I have one from the last time that I said I would read from the August 18th, but, uh, it's from Marva Mikel, and they state, I am in no way in favor of the old-fashioned bedroom community with zero amenities, in contrast, I direct your attention to a Sandy Springs build on 14 acres, which proposed retail, a park performing art center, and underground parking in their housing community. And then I go to, uh, Henry Wes Cantrell, um, his family has lived in Wexwood Glen since July 2nd, 1982, and Woodside Hills since the 90s, they enjoy living in this community for over 38 years, they're in favor of the development, proposed for 210, oh, this is the wrong one, sorry, he had a different.
Yeah, exactly, I was going to say, that's for, that's for the second proper parcel.
My apologies, so I have one from Michael Venable, the proposal exceeds the low to medium density proposed for the area, the location is near the outskirts of the county line, therefore too far detached from city centra- centri- tralit- can't even say it, to be central, to be appropriate, the site shows no clubhouse or amenities, pool, tennis, etc., Old National has suffered due to low expectations from developers, looking at the city's own economic development, development analysis, there is a severe oversaturation of smaller starter homes relative to the city as a whole. This was the same argument during the senior housing zoning case, excepted because of the nature of the housing, the proposal damages the prosperity future of the area, I encourage denial of this zoning. Uh, just make sure there aren't any other ones. Okay, that'd be it.
I have one more comment from Councilmember Khalid, he wants to clarify that Campfire Drive is just south of the traffic circle.
Will you repeat that?
I said, I have one more comment from Councilman Khalid, he would like to clarify that Campfire Drive is just south of the traffic circle.
Thank you.
Okay, if there's no other comments, I believe we'll be back to the.
So he's asking a question, he wants to know, so Campfire Drive is south of the
Campfire Drive is south of the traffic circle, and it will have its own opportunity for entrance into, I guess if one wanted to turn left to go onto Camp Valley, or if they turn right, then they would go up into the traffic circle and then continue along Camp Valley.
Okay, if there's no more comments, it's back to the board.
Mr. Hadley, you're muted.
Thank you, one of the, very good point about the, the value of the neighborhood deteriorating with, with that amount of, of homes and no amenities associated with them.
Um, I'm trying to make this a little, a little bigger here, I apologize, I'm going to look on here, with regards to amenity areas, we actually have ample space for what we would consider to be green space related type amenities with gazebo and additional, you know, grills and walking trails that really fit in with the context of the environmental components on the project, and so, um, you know, in terms of tot lots and things of that nature, we will be able to have those types of amenities in some of the areas that we're showing, we have not specified exactly where those are not where, but you can see some of the green space areas that we have on the site, but we are challenged by the amount of stream buffer that we have to actually stay out of, but I do know that we can have walking trails, which are planned, mulch trails around the perimeters of the, of the, the stream buffer areas that will provide for the amenity in a, in a nice kind of serene environment for those who are living there.
I don't think that, that suffices to what the caller was, was concerned about, a walking trail is not, is not the same thing as a clubhouse or a pool associated with a, a neighborhood.
I got you, I, I can tell you a few things.
And again, and again, the, uh, I don't think you're limited on space, number of units could be, could be decreased to provide for such immunity, for such amenities, and I think that's the number, number one concern, that we don't put houses back to back to back, and it's not something that's consistent with what, what the residents want.
Well, I, I think a couple of things, number one, um, I know that for myself, with the, the builders and the land developers that I represent, that there is a big push away from swimming pools in particular, and tennis courts, and the tennis courts have tended not to be utilized as much in the communities, the maintenance and upkeep that you have to do on a pool, and the financial risks, insurance, uh, coverage rates that communities have when they have pool facilities has often proved to be challenging for those communities that are, that have the, the monthly assessments that are required for the maintenance of those pools and other things of that nature, so I can tell you right now that I, I haven't, and I've been, you know, practicing land use and zoning for roughly 20 years, and, and definitely within the last five years, doing a lot of residential subdivisions, and I would say the mass majority of them, in fact, I don't, I can't recall one of them that has a swimming pool anymore, that is kind of, I don't want to say passe, but that was something that was much more prevalent 10 years ago than it is now, again, because of those risk factors, many of them have now moved towards more passive activities such as walking trails, tot lots, gazebo's, uh, grills, some do clubhouses, I've gotten mixed results from communities about clubhouses, because there are many who feel that they turn into party houses as opposed to just a clubhouse, and so, again, we are committed to doing a quality product, if there's something specific that this board would like to see, we certainly can look to try and incorporate that, but I know that there is definitely a move away from the swimming pool at an option.
This is Commissioner, Commissioner Jones, District 3, when you met with the community, did this issue come up? And what, and what did you discuss with them about what you would do in terms of amenities?
That was not a question that was, I think their more pressing issue was about the traffic, uh, in terms of the speed of the traffic, there wasn't really a lot of discussion about any amenity package, um, again, we would certainly be, um, you know, open to looking at, um, you know, adding more of an amenity or showing better what we plan on the site plan between now and the city council meeting, I think we can work through what those amenities could be, um, I, I'm not sure what else I can do with regards to the plan that you have before you, but there are areas on here, and I think you're correct, there's definitely space on here for us to be able, you know, to put great tot lots and things of that nature, pocket parks on the site, and that's what I believe the, the green spaces, particularly around the perimeter, the interior of the site will be able to do.
Michelle, I have a quick question, this is Nathan again, regarding, this is just one part that kind of jumps out at me, is that spot in the middle where the street dead ends, um, I know there would be no real reason to go to that, down that street unless you lived at one of those townhomes or were visiting there, um, would, these are all front-entry townhomes with, with driveways in front, correct?
Correct.
Okay, my, my concern was obviously, like I said, just Okay, my, my concern was obviously, like I said, just cars kind of getting stuck having to back out, even though it is just one lot long. I know it's not a big area, but that, that particular area jumped out at me, but if, if everything is front entry, there really would be no reason for anyone to ever get sort of stuck down there. So thank you for answering that.
Now, it's difficult to read everything on the map. The, the green space is at the bottom left of the, of the diagram.
The rendering that we provided, I believe staff had up now. There is some green space at, at the bottom. I guess it would be left-hand corner of the, of the site. That is not really accessible because there is the stream that cuts through. That is just green space, tree preserve kind of space over on that side. Green space that runs in the middle of the site. We are constricted by not only the stream buffer, but there's also a 25-foot impervious setback, I believe, that's required there. And that, in my opinion, is where the walking trail and any type of amenities could be located within that 25-foot setback because we cannot build within that setback. So you've got the, basically the 25-foot state stream buffer. Then you've got 50 feet of city stream buffer and then you've got a 25-foot setback on the other side, I believe. And so with that, we can definitely do some things within and around the perimeter of that stream. And then also up around the north end of the property, there's some green space back up in that area and around near where the, the traffic circle is at. But again, I think that we can come up with some very specific areas and make sure that we do a better job of showing exactly where the amenity areas will be on the site.
It's not a whole for it.
I'm sorry. I didn't hear what you said.
There, there is not a whole lot of room for it.
Well, there may be room. We'll have to make some adjustments and that may, you know, I hate to say it to my client, but they may have to lose a lot or two in order to put in the, the amenities that are needed. But I think we can make those adjustments and, and make it clear that one, it's a very green site. That's number one. We've got a lot of greenery. It's gonna stay pretty green on this site. I think that's gonna be a benefit to that community. I think that we can use those environmental features and amenity itself and make it very picturesque and very serene environment within this community. I think that it is important to have, you know, play areas for kids and things of that nature. And so, you know, the intent was to have pocket parks in and around. I think you see one of the pocket parks off along the lots, the, the, the area off of Lot 62 and 22. And there's some green space areas. They look small on here, but they're a little larger than what you may think. But I think we, again, just need to do a better job of highlighting where those pocket park type areas are going to be and, you know, what the amenity may be within that space. And again, I, I believe that if you were, were so inclined to recommend approval, if you recommended approval conditioned on us providing a better visual of the amenity package that will be added, that we can certainly do that between now and the council meeting.
This is Commissioner Shannon Jones again. I, I like your suggestion about reducing the number of lots.
I didn't, I didn't mean to volunteer that, but.
Well, well, I was, I was actually thinking it because I'm, I'm, I'm struggling. I've got these, these glasses on and I'm, 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 I'm sight challenged. And this map is not helping me a great deal on this screen. But I, I think that, that, that from what I'm looking at, I think that that may be a, a course correction that you guys might wanna take in order to, to really sweeten the deal of this type, of this, this, this live play community.
Well, I'm, I'm sure one or, or two lots to help facilitate having the, the amenity area is probably something that we can achieve. Again, it can't even be necessary to lose a lot and still provide what we, what you all would, I think what the community would see and what you all would see is, you know, a, a reasonable amenity area. We have some area to work with on here. I think we can get it done. My hope is that we don't have to delay too much for that purpose. I think we have really tried to address the concerns that the community has raised. As indicated, we went over and beyond with the traffic circle. And I think that just shows our commitment to continuing to put the best product forward.
You were making a, a recommendation to include a, a better showing of green space. Was that before the council meeting? What would you recommend? Would you repeat that?
I was saying whether or not you all could approve it, subject to providing city council with a site plan that clearly delineates the amenities and the areas and package that will be provided for this community.
I, I wanted to share this. It's a bad echo. If someone could mute. I wanted to share this and this is no reflection of you. I thought, I think you're doing a great job presenting this. But I hear it very often about green space and the space was green before you put all these houses or before the plan was to put all these houses that are here. So it's, it's not very much green space there. You got a stream that you can't really do anything with, which I'm imagining is included in the 40%, but it's not much green space there. So I would really, and my, my thoughts would be that it would be more than just a few lots taken to accommodate more green space. And I definitely would recommend a better showing or a different presentation where the, where the parks would be, where the gazebo's and trails would be.
Yeah, I think it needs stated that we, we have lost a significant number of units by changing the use of this property. We were at 251 units. We are now down to 158. We have lost over 90 units trying to make this a better, more accommodating site. You know, certainly it's currently zoned again SH for that 251 units. So I would like you all to consider that as you're asking the developers to continue to lose lots. I mean, I think that, again, we will be able to provide amenity areas. I think we have to look at what other communities as well, quality communities. I mean, I'm not talking about, you know, what I would consider to be, you know, lower end type communities. But, you know, we want this to be a, a very nice community. There's an expense that we incurred with, you know, putting in and redesigning the, for the roundabout, which was really over and above what we had to do. But what we were committed to doing in order to make a quality product. So I'd ask for you to be given that opportunity to go back and to make some modifications to allow us to better show and visualize the, the amenity package as requested by the community without having to lose a significant number of lots because we, like I said, we've already lost over 90 lots. And certainly we don't want to go back to the 251 units that we currently have approved.
The loss of those lots was part of the, the provision of the roundabout.
No, that, that was a decision that was made by this developer. It was approved for 251 lots. When we decided to, instead of doing a multifamily building, multifamily buildings, we opted to go to the single-family detached and attached product. That takes more space up. So we lost units, but we were taking up more space. So that's, that's where you see. I mean, there's a, a trade-off. I can do more units in a multifamily type configuration and building and have more amenity space. Or I can do what would be, you know, a more compatible in many ways, community with what's adjacent, but have, you know, less space for me to work with. So I've cut down my units, again significantly. I think we can provide the amenities and show that better and still have a product that is extremely nice and price points that support the continued growth and development of this community. I mean, I think, you know, $200,000 townhomes and, you know, homes going at between $250,000 and $300,000 is, is pretty nice package and a very marketable package within the metro Atlanta area and this area in particular.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone else have any other comments? Would like to share?
This is Jones again. I'm, I'm just happy that they moved away from 251 units because goodness gracious, could you imagine what this conversation would be in light of what the, what the caller's concerned? Could you imagine what, what this conversation would be like if those units were still there? So I think that, that, that they, the developer needs to show ambition in what he's proposing or they're proposing, excuse me, in, in terms of, of, of amenities.
I agree. And I, I think what the developer, what, what she recommended as far as showing a better delineation of where the trails and, and pocket parks would be, would be, would suffice before council.
I agree.
I agree also.
This is, I agree as well. I think the traffic circle, the trail parks are a great idea.
And, and Mr. Chairman, I just, I, this is Shannon again. I, I, you know, I love the clubhouse. I, I'm, I'm sorry that, that best practices are saying that that's passe. We, we do have some cold days and this is a community and it should be able to have a space where they can come together and, and have meetings, come together and celebrate the, the joys and, and, and the struggles of life. So I think that a, a, a space where they can gather inside would be great as well. Because we have some cold days in terms of barbecuing and, 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 and all of that. And, and that's not all we, that's not all that a community does. You know, they should have a, an area that, that they can come together. So I, I'm, I'm not sure. I'm not going to debate the issue as to whether or not it is, it's, it's a, a thing of the past, but I think that a meeting house is important for a community.
I, I do agree with you. I, I'm fond of the, the clubhouse, the pool and the tennis court. However, I have seen recently where neighborhoods who do have those type of amenities have a difficult time managing them. And, you know, easily two or three seasons in a row, some of the facilities could not open because of, because of that reason. So I do see a trend going that way, but you're right. We do need to make that, that space available. Green space is probably the better of the choices, considering what's going on now, but we have to plan for the future. Can we get a recommendation formally? Not everybody at once.
I'm just trying to get the wording.
So with regards to a motion, would we be looking to have this come back to us to be able to review it? Or are we saying that we would make the recommendations so they can be shown to, to the, to, to, to the larger governing?
What I think I hear us to agree upon is that we would be in harmony with staff's recommendation with the condition that the developer return the drawout or the layout further delineating where the trails and parks and pocket parks would be.
So Chairman, does that come to us before it goes to council? If we get recommendation or does it go?
It will go to council.
So it goes right to council and we have to kind of cross our fingers and hope that we didn't recommend something? And, and we get there, get to council meeting and say, well, this is not what we thought they were going to present. We thought that they were going to show more creativity than this. But I'm, I'm, I'm hopeful. I think the presenter was well, presented, laid out the case well and, and I do trust that, that, that she's, she, she will recommend to her clients that they will do what she so intelligently suggested.
Well, that's where we are to decide now. That's what we need to decide now.
So I would, I would make a recommendation that, that we accept or that we accept for staff's recommendation to us and that we recommend that this move on to council with the, with the understanding that there will be a, an ambitious and creative amenities package added in the next rendering. Will that pass muster?
Quit.
You all gotta stop me now. I'm, I'm a profession. I'm a preacher, so.
I, I thought that was okay. That was great. He said the whole amenity package too, for the record. And is anyone want to second that? Is there an, is there a, a comment to change before we entertain second, second in that?
Um, we have, we, there's still, there have been a lot more comments on YouTube as discussion has been happening.
These motherfuckers.
So I understand that the public comment section of the conversation has passed, but it's up to you guys.
We would definitely like to hear from the public.
Okay, so let's, where do we? Um, so I'm going back up to the top. So Joyce Armster says, no one contacted Heritage Park subdivision in regards to adding the roundabout. So even so, we will be affected by the traffic cut through. Marva Mikel says, I'm concerned about the amount of traffic entering and leaving the property on the camp road daily. Kimberly Richardson says, and has, and Kimberly Richardson says, have they evaluated the traffic flow or jam that will cause for our neighborhood on Campfire? Joyce Armstrong says, there's not enough room for this project. Gloria Harrison says that her concern is that there will there be, and she's asking if there will be a traffic light, and there will not be a traffic light. They're having a traffic circle in lieu of a traffic light to help mitigate the traffic.
Beat that one, please.
They're saying that there was an accident there earlier this month that they're concerned about. In no regards to the medical center coming on national, it'll be situated near the new homes on Camp Valley, and that's even more traffic in the area. There are actually like quite a few comments. Someone else says there are more accidents and police cars get stuck there. Somebody's police car got stuck there in a chain, someone said.
When you say got stuck there, were you speaking about the same intersection where the roundabout is proposed?
Yes, I believe they're talking about the intersection where the roundabout would be proposed. And I believe that people are really just very concerned about the traffic. Councilmember said, how many of these units have one car garages? And how long are the driveways for each unit? Are they do they have staggered setbacks? There's a lot of, there's a lot of conversation happening in the traffic.
Okay, we have to be very cautious because of the inability for everybody to participate because of the online meetings, that we include all comments from from the public. So if we have any, all comments need to be able should be able to be responded to. So please let us know in the event that we can come in so we can manage them. That definitely changes things.
Thank you. Do I do I need to redraw redraw the motion? Because I didn't know that we had all of those that largest comments.
They are so full of shit.
I'm not sure if it's necessary to redraw you to retract the recommendation at this time. I do think we need to continue with the with the comments, though.
Would you like for me to read some more? There's quite a few on here. But I mean, I can read all of them, or I can some.
How many? How many do you have?
It's just a lot, right? People are just having a conversation in the chat box. And earlier when we started the process, we had asked that people kind of submit their comments and questions in paragraph form, because that way we can kind of keep track of who said what, and we can get them. And it can be a little more organized. But there are just a lot of like one or two line or three line, like just comments. So I can start from the top. So Joyce Armstrong says there's not enough room in this area for the project. Gloria Harrison said, my concern is there will be a traffic light. I already answered that one. They talked about two accidents. Elaine Stubbs wants to know where the roundabout will be placed, and so we can answer that one. So I guess the I guess the roundabout will be placed at the entrance of the property. If it's the back, the roundabout will be here. This is Campfire Road. I think it looks like it's after the what else is there? And then Marva Mikell says the site continues to look utterly congested with blocks. Joyce Armstrong says I already read that one. Marva Mikell also says lots of lost lots, question mark, you can't lose what you've never had, excuse me saying. Elaine Stubbs says, where's the traffic circle at the curb or above? So I think that it's a little bit south of Campfire Road. That's what I said. Joyce Armstrong says the money to be made sounds good, but it's not worth the traffic nightmare. Kimberly Richardson says it was a three car wreck or spin out on August 30th. The police there was a car struck in the woods where the news is. I think this roundabout should be thought out. Gloria Harrison says, would you be so kind to please address the question? So we're working on that.
To what?
Elaine Stubbs says no to the clubhouse because it will be rented out, and there will be problems. Gloria Harrison says, with all due respect, I'm more concerned about the traffic. I back up.
Will you pause for a moment, please? You mentioned someone said, with all due respect. I missed the last part of that.
I'm more concerned about the traffic in the Purdy Road. I think that comment was in response to the conversation we were having about the amenities.
No, actually, that comment was about five comments up.
Okay.
And it said, with all due respect. And then it seemed like there was nothing said after that.
Let's see. So Councilmember Khalid wants to know how many of the units will have one car garages? How long are the driveways for each unit? And are there staggered setbacks?
Can we get those questions answered?
I will be happy to answer questions. I am going to put on public that we were in the middle one of a vote. I questioned the procedure as we were the comment had been closed. The applicant had presented, the community had an opportunity to present. There will always be comments in the chat. There'll continue to be comments in the chat. There has to be some kind of protocol for how this will be handled in the future. But with regards to this particular meeting, we obtained a traffic study that has been made available to staff. We also submitted it to individuals in the community to be circulated. So any questions with regards to traffic and how traffic is along Camp Valley Road, again, were addressed in the traffic study. As already been stated by your transportation department, we went over and beyond by putting in the traffic circle as a way to address the speed issues and to better circulate traffic. And I think that Nathan also responded to the benefits of the traffic. I get that some people may not be familiar with that. But we do believe that it will provide a positive overall. How it will function, I'd be happy between now and city council meeting to have a follow up meeting with the community in order to address any additional questions that they may have concerning how the traffic study, how the traffic circle will function. With regards to the setbacks for the property, we are in compliance with the current requirements under TR. We will not, under the regulations that you all have, we will have, and I think the site, the elevation showed that we will have both two car and one car garage units, which quite honestly is very unusual, particularly for the townhome component. The single family homes will have two garages, the townhomes, some will have two, some will have one. In many communities, in most of my communities that I've done for townhomes, there's typically only one car garage. And there are many who feel that the two car garage is a plus. So we are offering both and two car garages. With regards to the setbacks, the minimum setbacks, I believe, on the townhomes, I think it's 20 feet and 40 feet, I believe, on the single family townhomes, a single family homes. Whatever the case may be, we are required to ensure that no car or SUV is hanging out into the public right of way or over the sidewalk area. So in terms of the units and staggering, we have to comply with the city's requirements with regards to that. And, you know, that is our intent. We're not seeking any variances with regards to that. So again, we are more than happy to have a follow up meeting with the community that had actually kind of been planned after I went ahead and sent around the site plan and the traffic study to be able to address those issues. And if you have any other questions for me, I'd be happy to address them.
Community meetings have you had so far? And what was the participation?
The first community meeting, I can't remember how many people we had, but I think it was around 30 or 40 people that were on that call, or maybe more. I know both Councilmember Khalid and Commissioner Al Hambrik were both on that call. That a couple of days later, I did go out. We actually had the community information meeting first with the city. There were a number of people on there that had comments. We then had a follow up meeting with the community that had already been planned a few days later. We had that meeting, and then I went out to the site and met with roughly 10 to 15 people on site to discuss the issues that they had with regards to traffic along that area. And we committed ourselves to doing something to address the traffic. And as your transportation department has indicated, we have gone over and beyond what been required, because the initial traffic study did not actually show that we had to do the traffic study, I mean, the the traffic circle. We actually volunteered to do the traffic circle as a way of trying to address the traffic issues and the speeding in that area.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments? From the phone?
There's another one. Joyce Armster says I submitted a petition with 200 signatures, this project for this project, due to concerns about traffic in our subdivision. Were they given any consideration? And some more people said we need to have the meeting soon. Kimberly Richardson said, when is the, when and where is she speaking about the community that that needs? So I think that for when they say they have community meetings, I think they mean that they had a community meeting with people that were within a quarter mile of the proposed development.
Ms. Battle, how did you publicize your meeting?
The city gives us a list of who we send out notices to. We actually, I think, went a little beyond what the city's requirement is. You have to remember that many of the individuals are unincorporated. Clayton County as well. We were right at the Clayton County City of South Fulton line. But we did notify people on both sides. Typically, you're looking at five, any neighbor within 500 feet. I believe we went out 750 feet on our notices that we sent out. And again, we had a very good meeting, I believe, like I said, we have, I think it was somewhere around 40, 40 people or so that were in a meeting. I have to go back and look at our list.
And most of the opposition that you heard at that meeting was centered around traffic?
Correct.
Thank you.
And again, we we went from 251 units to 158.
Okay. Do we have any other questions from the from the public? That have not been answered?
No, I'll make the last comment from Marva Mikell. She said, I would like to see no neighborhood built there.
You're breaking up. I did not hear you.
So, so, yeah, there are a few more. So Marcelis 1876 says, how did you go above and beyond? You did not explain anything to how that's going to help with traffic flow. Joyce Armster says Heritage Park and Thornwood were not contacted. And Marva Mikell says I would, I would like to see no neighborhood built there.
Where's Heritage Park in proximity to this? Can anyone answer that?
I'm not sure. I can look it up right quick. If they were not contacted.
Okay, please.
If they were, if they were not contacted, I'm sorry, I couldn't hear.
If they were not contacted, I believe it's not within the quarter mile radius.
I'm sorry, I can't hear.
She said if they were not contacted, it's probably because they were not in the quarter mile radius. Which is the requirement from the city?
Can I, I want to, this is Nathan, I want to please remind the group that we have our time limits on public comment and comment from the petitioners as well. We are past that time.
Okay, thank you. Please, let's proceed.
There's a motion.
We do have a motion on the floor.
We need someone to second it.
Does anyone have anything else to propose?
If there's a motion, members, you need to make a motion, either voted up or down either way.
This is Shatika Floyd. I second the motion.
All right, the motion has been seconded.
And I'll do the roll call. Shatika Floyd. Rodney Hadley. Shannon Jones.
Yay.
Janai Walters.
Nay.
And Raquel Williams. Is she still there?
Still here.
Okay. I'm sorry, is that a yay? All right, great. The vote passes four to one.
Thank you.
All right, the next the next petition is 720, that 002 request to rezone from AG1 to CUP. This petition was deferred from August the 18th.
Yes, all right, Marissa, if you can go to the first slide, please. And I'd like to remind the people on the phone, I know there are some members of the community on the phone, please make sure you are muted. I see some people who are not muted. Please make sure you're muted. And the public comment time will be delineated by opening and closing. It'll be kept at 10 minutes. So make sure your comments when they are made are succinct, please. So this is 2210 Wallace Road. Petition here is proposing to reason from AG1 to CUP for the purpose of building some single family homes. The site is surrounded by single family homes, and it is in a residential area. The proposal here fits the current characteristics of the area being residential and the future land use plan for the area. The developer submitted some condition, and the staff recommendation is approval with those conditions that were submitted by the developer. It was carried over from last month, pending more public participation, which was provided by the developer, and it was in all of the And it was carried over from last month, pending more public participation, which was provided by the developer and it was in all of the members' package for this meeting. Marissa, if we can go to the next slide, please. Here you see the map of the zoning on the map. It's the triangular-ish parcel in the middle, zoned AG one, surrounded by residential and some AG one across the street, but also single-family. It is an undeveloped site, as you see on the aerial map. If we can go to the next slide, please. This is a site plan of what is proposed. I know the, the petitioner will have some comments on this. If we can go to the next site plan, the next picture, please. This is the proposed sample elevation for a house in this subdivision. Marissa, if you would do me a favor and scroll back to the previous slide. If the petitioner would want, if they're trying to comment next, please comment. I know they're gonna wanna, wanna hear some about the fencing and landscaping against Wallace Road, shielding the back of these properties. So if you would please make a point to address that. And one point I also want to have, make sure that the petitioner addresses is in the public participation report that was submitted, there was a discussion of rental properties. And I believe that that centered around HOA covenants allowing a certain percentage of rental properties and not this being developed as rental homes or being owned by the developer long-term. So please make a point to address those points if you would be so kind. And I will turn it over to the petitioners for their comment time.
Okay, good afternoon. My name is Roy Harris. I'm the presenter here. And I'm representing the developer. First of all, thank you for your time and attention today. I appreciate you taking the time to hear us. I'd like to, first of all, just preface that I've lived in this community. I live in this community. I've been living here for twenty-seven years now. So this is kind of near and dear to my heart as well. So I'm not an outsider bringing this. I live, you know, real close to this property. So this decision affects me as well in terms of my property value. I purposely recruited a developer to this parcel. This parcel has been agricultural and has not been developed in over fifty years. Nathan, as you mentioned, we're requesting a zoning change from AG one, which is agricultural, to CUP. The development will consist of thirty-eight residential homes, not townhomes. And we are compliant. I just wanted to say we're compliant with the city of South Fulton's long-term plan. So their future land use map does state, you know, three homes per acre. So I'd just like to state that we are in, excuse me, in compliance with that as well. Let me just clarify something for the sake of the group as well, because last time we started, there was a question about setbacks. And I misstated our position. The cup or CUP setback is five feet. However, our house setbacks would be nine feet minimum to thirteen feet. So that gives you eighteen to twenty-five feet minimum between each of the houses. Our houses are going to be twenty-three hundred to twenty-five hundred square feet. The average lot size is sixty feet in width, which brings you to approximately sixty percent of the homes would be probably a minimum of eighteen feet between. And forty percent of the houses would be twenty-five to twenty-five feet between. The commission requested, we've had a couple of meetings with the community as well. So we met with the community initially. We came and presented. There was a request for us to go back to the community, which we did. The first meeting with the community, there were thirty-five participants. And in our second meeting, there were fifty-five participants in the meeting. Also, as an add-on to that, we had a meeting with an additional smaller venue of community folks yesterday to, or I'm sorry, Sunday, to address more of the community concerns and talk about those. So one of the major clarifying points was the fact that we had miscommunicated about the setback. So I wanted to start off by clarifying that. Regarding the other, I guess, concerns from the community were the style of house, type of house, the finishes, things like that, which we addressed appropriately. We showed them where these actual houses are selling for, in the five hundreds in East Atlanta and other areas. So from a competitive standpoint, in terms of the product we're offering, it's a very viable product and it's a very current product that's being provided in the Atlanta area. What we actually added based on some of our, our meetings with the community as well, we're proposing at the kind of the north, I guess that would be northwestern corner there, would be small green space. This parcel is not big enough for us to include any significant amenity to that point. But we're prepared to do sidewalks on the exterior, meaning Wallace Road, for the frontage of our subdivision, as well as internally within the subdivision as well. We're going to provide landscaping between the houses and Wallace Road, which shields the houses from the street. And the creation of the HOA for the subdivision, which would have a maximum of thirty percent contingency for rentals. And just let me clarify as a caveat that, as a developer, we are not building this to rent any of it. The ideal would be a hundred percent sale, a hundred percent occupancy. But this would be the HOA documents that we would pass on to the HOA for future usage, would be the thirty percent caveat. Once again, brick option would be available for the houses as an upgrade if they wanted. And that's kind of what we talked about and what the changes or additions that we made for our offering. Now, you mentioned-
Any questions from the board?
Well, Nathan, before you go on-
I'm sorry, yes, I'm sorry.
About a fence line? Where were you saying the fence line?
Well, my, my question was essentially around focus on buffering on Wallace Road. And so, you know, I, I don't, I don't love when I drive down the roads and see, you know, basically walls blocking things off. But my point there is just to make sure that, and I know that would be included on any future development plan, but just to make sure that there is sufficient buffering so that people aren't seeing the road from their houses necessarily. And we aren't driving around seeing people's backyards directly. I know there's, there's kind of a line there, but because having a wall there is unsightly. We've all driven by subdivisions like that. But obviously, there needs to be some, some significant shielding there, or notable shielding there.
Yeah, exactly. And that, yeah, that's what our plan is, to do some significant landscaping between the back of those houses facing Wallace Road and Wallace Road. So it would be significant greenery. So that it would be totally buffered from the street.
And obviously, homeowners could put a fence there if they wanted to. I mean, anybody would be able to do that, so.
Right.
Is there questions from the board?
We will plant, we'll plant nice landscaping that is gonna be noticeable. Also, yeah, so that's it. To make it very-
Gotcha. Anything from board members here?
Yes, sir. The, the number one point of contention that I recall and have heard as a potentialist at this development is the density. The amount of houses you're putting into space. And is not consistent with the, with the community, the existing community.
Well, as mentioned, I mean, our density is consistent with, with what the city of South Fulton requires. You know, we are three units per acre and are in total compliance with the city's future land use map and their plan.
Yes, sir, I understand that. However, the, the city is different. Not all places in the, in the city are the same. Which is why we have to make sure that the, the values of the residents' concerns are, you know, are kept. And right now, the zone is AG one. The requirement, I believe, is one house per acre, which is pretty consistent with what's in that area. I would be leading to say that to, to, to decrease the amount of houses would, would, would go a lot better with the community. Moving it from two acres, or excuse me, two houses to an acre versus three. That is consistent with what's in the neighborhood already. Those are, those are my thoughts. The, the setback, I think you went from eighteen, it was initially shared it was five, and you went from eighteen to twenty-five. That is, that is an improvement, but the density of houses is still there.
Well, and that was just, and to the setback, once again, that was just an oversight on my part. So actually, the, the house plan has not changed. I just clarified because our houses are gonna be, you know, the thirty-eight feet wide. So it's not really a, a change. It was more of an edification or clarification to our offering.
Yes, sir, I'm, I'm clear on that. It still is not consistent with the surrounding area, though. What were the, what were the public's concern? What were the public's thought when you, what were their statements when you met them the second and the third time?
Well, it, it was mixed, fortunately. Excuse me?
Will I be able to speak for the public on our own behalf?
Yes, well, it's your turn, sir.
Okay.
You want me to continue?
Please.
Yes, Mr. Harris, you can continue.
Okay, and Eric, who's gonna speak, I will just preface that he was one of the three folks who did take the time to meet with us on Sunday. And we had about a two-hour meeting. Was he Raynell Harris and Melanie, who's a Realtor? And I don't know Melody's, I forgot Melody's last name. But, you know, Melanie and Raynell, I think, had, were understood how, you know, as we moved into the twenty-first century in two thousand and twenty, that diversity is gonna be one of the keys to success for any community. And having everything, you know, be the same is not necessarily a pre-script for success as a community long-term. So, you know, there are so many communities that have different, they don't all look the same and all the houses aren't the same. So I think the challenge for us in terms of paradigm a lot of the time is, you know, kind of not expecting everybody to come in and do the same thing that was done before. But in terms of what the community, their responses were some pro, some negative. There were a lot of folks who, you know, were in favor. I know Mr. Henry Westcontrell, he did send you an email as well that I think you guys began to read at the beginning of the other presentation. And I'll let you guys read that at the appropriate time. But their concerns were, as we talked about in the past, sidewalks, which we, you know, accommodated having some green space. Their concerns were style of house, type of house, things of that nature as well. So it's kind of a mixed group. There were a lot of people who felt we do need, they do need diversity and a lot of change. And there were a lot of people who felt, you know, keep things as they are forever. So it's a mixed bag. There were some concerns about value. And I think at least the three of us on the committee were able to work through the, the value piece of it so they could understand that their values would not diminish in terms of our product offering, but actually increase.
Mr. Harris, can you speak to that? Because when you were talking about diversity, I was thinking about, yes, but, 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 but does there have to be such a disparity in what is comparable? So if you could just speak to, if you could speak to that for me, how, how did you answer that with community in terms of?
That, that being valued?
That being valued, sir, I'm sorry.
Yes, so value, basically, the, the price point of the house that we, we build, if we talk about square footage value, and I don't want to get too deep in that because I know the concern is really to focus on what's best for the community and not our numbers. However, our product increases the value of all the houses in the area thirty, thirty-five percent minimally. You know, if we want to use that just as a benchmark. The, if we look at real estate, what's being built now versus what was being built, you know, twenty, twenty-five years ago, the product is really changing. And what people's expectations are is changing as well. Everybody doesn't want a house on a half acre with a lot of grass to cut and things like that. If we talk about trying to, to bring younger people to the community, because right now, kind of that little, you know, culvert or area is folks who have lived in their house, you know, twenty-five plus years. And so when you look at that area for a lot of those communities, you're gonna have over a period of time a diminishing tax base. So in an effort to attract a younger audience, you've got great schools and things like that, often you're gonna need a different product as well. So everybody doesn't want that product. I don't know, does that answer some of it without getting too deep in the woods?
No, it does. I'm just interested. Did you discuss the thirty to thirty-five percent value added with the, the community when you met with them? And how was that received?
Well, with the community, it's really difficult because the volume is so high that it's really hard to even have a good conversation with them. But we were able to have, and yes, I did. Just so, let me first of all say, yes, I did. However, we were able to have a more detailed conversation with the secondary committee. Mr. Harris is an architect by design and an engineer. And Melanie is a Realtor as well. So we were able to really have a good detail. And Eric, Mr. Shepherd, also, we had a good conversation about value in that regard as well.
So when you say that, that, that it was, that the volume was high, you mean tempers were kind of flaring around it and you couldn't have?
Well, well, it's just, it's, it's hard a lot of times when, you know, when you've got a lot of different ideas and opinions to be able to communicate that without, you know, people not muting their phones. And it, it's hard to really control that. So it's really difficult when people come to the conversation with a preconceived notion and they really don't listen or hear what you have to say. It's really hard to, to communicate a lot of time with people.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Any other commissioners have a, a comment before we move to public comment?
And, and just let me say one thing before we move forward, sir. You know, there is a big demand for, you know, smaller lots with nicer interior finishes that actually add more, higher value today. So when you look at the business model for a lot of subdivisions and communities and, you know, smaller parcels, then you will find often that there are, you know, there's just a different push in terms of what people are trying to accomplish. So if you look at some of the surrounding neighborhoods, such as, you know, Eden, Eden Pines or Woodside or Daytona or Happy Valley or Wexford Glen, which are older communities now, you know, that's kind of, that's just it. It's not something that, and it, it does sell out, I'll say that. So anything I think is built in this community will be successful. However, it's just a matter of a paradigm shift, I think, for a lot of people.
And I think sometimes we, we just kind of, you know, I think it's, it's our role as, as an advisory body to counsel to kind of mitigate how we go about recommending and, and a, a change because change is absolutely necessary.
Yes.
But you know, uh, South Fulton uh is a new city, but as a community, it's, it's an old ship. And you can't turn an old ship too fast. Sometimes you'll, you'll, you'll capsize. So you absolutely have to, you have to make some changes uh, because that's necessary growth. Uh, that's necessary for, for growth um, and to attract. And so uh, you get no argument out of, out of that from me. It's, it's just that as we change, we don't wanna change at, at a, at a pace that is so fast that it, it just causes a large segment of the community that has been bought in to get dizzy. And you understand that because as you stated, this is your community.
Oh, absolutely. Yeah, I live, you know, I mean, I'm walking distance to the property. So you know, I understand that definitely. I think often what happens is, you know, you, you'll look at it a few years later and the same people who were um, kind of tentative will be happy when they see their property values not be as flat as they are because this, the same products that we're selling over here, as we all know, would be at a much higher value add in other areas. And one of the goals is to, of course, the main goal is to make sure that the community is uh happy and pleased and comfortable with what we're doing. But I think at the end of the day, we all want to see our values increase exponentially. And, you know, as a new city, of course, that's gonna be something that, you know, you guys are gonna have to really push forward because in terms of just having the, the revenues to, you know, operate the new city effectively on behalf of the homeowner. So I heard a lot of people wanting uh sidewalks entirely on Wallace Road. You know, these are things that having an increased uh revenue, tax revenue base helps you to be able to provide that for the city and other amenities as well.
I have a question. This is um Rachel Williams. Um, Commissioner Rachel Williams, in regards to your setbacks, I was reading the meeting minutes, which I think we discussed on the last meeting. Um, can you clarify, you did a general with the front, back and side? Cause I think we were more concerned about the side um setback in the last meeting.
Let, let me make sure I'm understanding. We, you're asking about the setbacks for?
You gave a generalization of the footage of the setbacks, but you didn't say, I know each, you know, house is different. What's the standard for the front and the sides? And I remember in, in reading the meeting minutes, that it was the side um setback that we were looking at and concerned in the last meeting.
Yeah, let me see if uh.
Roy, I can answer that.
Yeah, thank you, Nathan.
Yeah, hey, this is Chuck. Um, yes, the uh, front setbacks are twenty feet. The side minimum setbacks are uh, five feet. Um, adjacent to a, a street, it will be fifteen feet on the side. And the rear setbacks are thirty-five feet.
And that's just, that's what the city, that CUP zoning requirements, right?
Minimum, correct, yes.
That's, and once again, that is not our side setback.
So what is your side setback in general? Cause I know each house is different by the layout.
Yeah, so let me, let me go through that again. So as mentioned, um, you've got a sixty-foot lot. Basically, um, our houses are going to be um, minimally eighteen feet between each house. Max would be twenty-five feet between each house.
Okay, that answers my question.
And I guess on the change point, just before we go to uh the uh, Mr. Shepherd and other community folks who wanna chime in. Um, you know, it's, it's a change that's going on all around Atlanta. I know, you know, each city has its own unique footprint. Um, but it's not something that's uni- we're not asking, we're not doing anything that's not kind of standard and, you know, what's going on in the city now, I should say. Or around the city, I should.
We have to be cautious because all change is not right. Like the subdivision that was built across the street from there, which is ninety percent enough rental, turned to rental property now, that doesn't do anything for the community or the, or the value of the homes there. So yeah, what you're saying, uh, we have to take everything with a grain of salt and, and properly investigate it.
And, and that's a good point, Rodney, and, you know, I hope that we won't be held accountable for the other subdivision, cause I've heard that many, many times. And I know that was something that didn't work out for you guys in the manner that you would want. But that's not what we're proposing and I would hope, I would really hope that we wouldn't be held accountable for what they did.
We don't hold you accountable for what we, what they do. However, we do learn and uh, expect that we don't have to repeat, you know, bad situations or failed situations.
Exactly. And so as a developer, I'm sure that was not their original goal. Um, and as a developer, we definitely won't. And don't, that's not what we're, that's not what we're trying to do.
Yeah, we can't go. I understand what you're saying. Uh, I would like to check to see if any of the other commissioners have a, have a comment or a question before we move forward. We do wanna make sure we give enough time for the uh, public comment. All right, well, I recommend we move forward with the uh, public comment. Ten minutes are reserved for those speaking in favor of each case and another ten minutes are reserved for those speaking in opposition to the case. Please state your name, address and the council different, council district within you represent, you reside, excuse me.
This is Nathan, real quick, Mr. Shepherd, I know you are online um, on this Zoom call. We, and I would just want to say, we may have one or two other community members who got the Zoom link, I'm not sure. But uh, let's just make sure that we are brief as we can be and that we try not to talk over one another. Uh, Mr. Shepherd, to your point, I believe the ca- um, I believe the note that you sent me um, has it forwarded to the board members since I did, I got it late in the day. I believe that Dana had forwarded it to them. Uh, but we can put that up on the screen. I know Marissa, if you have that, could you put that up on the screen? Um, uh, if you wanna go over those points really quickly.
Sure, if you could put those up on the screen as I proceed, I really appreciate that. Uh, thank you guys for this opportunity to speak to you. My name is Eric Shepherd, uh, eight-eight-eight Dolly Avenue. Um, I reside in the city council, uh, in the council area one. Um, and to be honest with you guys, I've taken uh, in the past twelve days, uh, basically a mini crash course or graduate course in, in, in coming up to speed as much as possible on zoning regulations, uh, house values, ar- architectural engineering uh, terms. Uh, so to say that I feel like I'm a fish out of water is, is the least uh, characterization I can put on myself. But I'm gonna speak on behalf of our community. When I say on behalf of our community, I, I, I dare say uh, the majority, the vast majority of our community members um, feel the way that, that, that we feel. Um, our first our first position, I, I hear someone else speaking there. Can you guys hear me?
Mr. Chairman, if everyone could mute their phones.
On the first page, you'll see our first position uh, opposition is, in fact, one uh, with the staffing recommendation uh, that the proposed zoning proposal will adversely affect the existing use of the homes. And you guys recommended, know um, that it's similar and it would not affect any existing use. Um, however, we find this false because the parcels that are directly adjacent, that are actually connecting uh, to uh, the proposed site, um, east, north and west of it are zone R three. The parcels directly to the south across uh, from the proposed site are zoned cup or AG one with at least one acre lots, some as large as three to five. So we, we blatantly, we, we blatantly find that to be false, that it is similar to what's in the area. And we do have that attachment one and two, you can see um, with the, the layout of the of the parcels there and the zoning. We also disagree on whether the proposal will result in a use that would or could uh, uh, cause excessive vertisim use to the existing streets and transportation facilities, utilities or schools. The, the staff said, no, the proposal is for a future medium to low density, which we definitely don't believe that's low dis- density residential area that would not significantly impact existing infrastructure. We have asked repeatedly for a s- a um, traffic study and have not uh, received that. Um, anecdotally, uh, we, we see track has in- in- increased from the subdivision that, that was built uh, behind a Woodside Hills. Uh, but we don't have any quantitative evidence to prove that. Um, but we know that it has increased um, significantly, significantly, and we believe that to be true uh, when this subdivision, if it were ever to be built under the current proposal. Uh, we are also, our point number two, we are opposed to the elevation, the facade, the lack of porches, the um, the, the stone and brick highlights that were shown in the previous mo- meeting. Uh, the front facing, the garage is uh, the three-sided, um, the three-sided siding. The consensus of just about everyone that we've spoken to uh, in the, in the community is that the elevations aren't that attractive. Um, and we do believe elevations do matter. Uh, our third opposition um, would be to the lot sizes. Now, this is a point of contention because any, Mr. Harris spoke to the eight thousand square foot lot sizes, um, less than a quarter of an acre. Uh, and the five-feet setback that, that we, that we were hung up on uh, as is, is set as a minimum of the cup zoning regulations. It was agreed to by both the applicant and the zoning committee, and that's what scares us. It was agreed to. Now, even though their plan says that eighteen to twenty-two feet or eighteen to twenty-six feet, if the cup regulation says that they can go as little as five, God forbid the, 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 the economy were to collapse and they need to jam in as many homes as possible to make that up. If the cup regulation says they can, I don't see, we don't see, we don't understand right now what would be there to stop them. We also are opposed to the clear cutting, as, as you can see on their plans, of all the trees and the vegetations in that area. Now, I don't know how many of you uh, commissioners or even your staff have driven down Wallace Road, but it is a beautiful area uh, full of trees uh, with large acre homes. This would be a total, total change, one hundred and eighty-degree change from what's currently there. Our fourth opposition, and this is our, one of our strongest points, we just don't believe that they will, those prices regardless of what uh, Mr. Harris said they would put in, inside um, would, would, would start in the low threes and move up to the fours. And we're not just saying that be- out of belief, we're just looking at the homes that are similarly designed a little less than a mile away. He mentioned Enin Pines. We have homes that you can see on our attachment, I believe, um, our attachment three um, of homes in Enin Pines, and those homes are going for two hundred and fifty thousand, two hundred and forty, two hundred and forty-five thousand. The designs are similar. No, they're not exact, but they're very similar to the craftsman style that they're proposing to build directly across the street from us. Um, our biggest, one of our biggest concerns, and I wanna make this clear, we are totally against the cup designation. We believe that an R three or an R three A designation will better protect us with homes, with the minimum of homes on a fourth, about a point four of an acre. Um, we don't understand how the math actually works uh, with and I believe in the site plan, it says you have eleven point one acres of land to develop. You're proposing thirty-eight homes. You mentioned that it fits in with the uh, city of Fulton uh, twenty thirty-five plan with three homes per unit, uh, three homes per unit on eleven point one acres is only thirty, thirty-three point three homes. We don't understand how you're gonna get another five homes in that small of a plot. In, in general, we just believe that that area is too small for the number of homes that they're proposing to build, that the density um, and the increase of tr- in traffic uh, would totally destroy um, our, our way of life that we've been accustomed to. We're not opposed to uh, and, and Mr. Harris is correct, we're not opposed to a, a different type or a different price point home. I just, we just believe that their understanding of what they can uh, get for a home of that quality is overinflated. I want to point to our attachment uh, seven, which shows homes that have recently sold in Barrington Trace. Uh, homes that have also sold in uh, the uh, Wind Creek area. Um, much larger homes, three-sided bricks, side, side garages, and they're selling for close to a hundred thousand dollars less than what those homes were selling in Eastlake. As you know, you cannot compare homes, not Eastlake, East Atlanta, I'm sorry, I wanna correct that, I know it's not Eastlake, and East Atlanta to the homes uh, that are built out here. We still have plenty of green space. This is not, this area, as a matter of fact, is rated at about a one in a hundred for walkability. We haven't arrived to that point yet where, where dense, densely packed homes are, are something that people value and are willing to pay top dollar for because of the amenities that are close by. You move over to the Publix across the street uh, on uh, on Hamilton and, and and Camp Creek, sure, maybe something like that will work uh, back there. But I challenge, I challenge you guys, um, the commissioners and even you, Mr. Harris um, to, to, to show us where you could build a home similar to what you're proposing and increase our values thirty to thirty-five percent. As a matter of fact, we believe that the homes that you're proposing build, which were probably, in our opinion, based on the homes sold in Enin Pines, also those homes that were built on fair and rose, cause they're somewhat similar to, to what you have, would actually take about a hundred thousand dollars on average out of our pockets in our own values. We are deeply opposed to this plan because of those reasons. The cup designation and the traffic study being one of our two uh, most powerful uh, opposition points. Um, and you mentioned to us about us having a preconceived notion about value. Um, we, we, this neighborhood is comprised of quite a few people that have lived here, and I understand you've lived here for twenty-seven years. The people that we've talked to these past twelve days, we're talking people that have lived here thirty, forty years or more. Ms. Royal, or Ms. Britton, or Ms. Boone, um, they also uh, are concerned. Their homes face directly to uh, your property and the traffic study uh, that hasn't been completed yet. We believe you're pushing too fast on this zoning recommendation and that it does not fit into the characteristics of the current community uh, surrounding it, particularly the Madison Trace subdivision, which is directly in front, Barrington Trace of Wind Creek and some of the older homes, you, he is absolutely right when he says that the values, if you were to get your three hundred dollars, thousand dollars, would increase their value thirty to thirty-five percent. But the homes that are being directly impacted, you would actually take money out of our pocket. So we're ve- we are totally against uh, your, your proposal for those reasons.
Okay, the ti- this is Nathan, the time is up for opposition. I'm not sure if the board members have any quick follow-up questions they'd like to ask.
We do need to note the recommendations uh, from the speaker. They were on the last page of this presentation, I believe.
May I read them?
Please.
The time, go, go on.
Uh, yeah, please. Um, everyone else went over way over before. Please give me this time. Our recommendations are for the R three, R three A zoning. Uh, the elevations, we want uh, at least in, obviously, these are negotiable. We want three-sided brick, two-car minimum courtyard or side driveways, minimum ant-harty plank on the backside, mailboxes that consist in either metal or brick. We are looking for some sort of privacy fence or barrier to, to be put along Wallace Road without the clear cutting of the trees. Uh, we would like a minimum of ninety-five percent of the homes to be four or three bedrooms. We feel more comfortable with the covenant community agreement with a rental restriction of no more than ten percent. I understand twenty percent is mostly the standard, but we believe thirty-three percent is entirely too high. And lastly, but not leastly, we request a traffic study for the um, proposed site before anything moves forward.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Let me add, are there comments? We, we should make a point to ask if there are comments from um, YouTube or emails that have come in. I'm sure there are.
Nathan, let me jump in also. We've got some people, as Mr. Shepherd, who are trying to dial in so they can have the same opportunity to so they can have the same opportunity to voice um their um um being for the project, but they're not able to get in, so I guess somebody is.
So I do want to make, I do want to, I do want to note that the time for, we we've surpassed the time for both of those i- in favor comments and opposing comments. I'm not going to necessarily dictate what the, what the board can or should do. I do want to make note that we are beyond the prescribed time for both of those things uh as we had laid out at the beginning of this meeting, so I want to note that.
We certainly need to hear wh- what's for, we we certainly need to hear uh the other side of the story.
I do have a comment that's for.
Okay, let's let's do, let's do the reading of the YouTube comments and of the um email comments right now, if we could, please.
Okay. All right, I'll start with uh Mr. Henry Cantrell the third. Um his family's lived in Westwood Glen since uh nineteen eighty-two, July of nineteen eighty-two, uh the Woodside Hills since the nineties, um they've enjoyed living in a community for thirty-eight years. They're in favor of development proposed for two twenty-two-ten Wallace Road. Uh they think it's a really good starting price point, it's a good one. Um and like every neighborhood around this area, it will go up, which will be a win-win for everyone. He's in agreement. Several people concerned about the values of the homes, but according to the trends from around the metro area and right in South Fulton, further out, values will be just fine. The same type of developments have been built in South Fulton, which are the lakes at Cedar Grove, Grove. It encompasses all types of homes from larger ones to more, one more land to houses with less land as proposed on Wallace Road. They also have townhomes and ranch-style homes as well. All of the new homes start in the mid-three-hundred K price range. They offer green space, playgrounds, and there is water such as lakes and creeks all over the entire development. They have all sold like hotcakes as these proposed houses will. Sidewalks as well, sidewalks are important, and anybody walking for exercise down Wallace should appreciate them because you will almost lose your life. That includes Enon Road as well. I heard someone say that this is not a sidewalk community, it should be for sure. I intend, I attended two public meetings via Zoom and was very disappointed in the people's comments and attitudes. It seems like they will think that bigger is better and their intention is to keep certain types of people and houses out of the neighborhood. Well, if this is the case, then they would have issue with the homes on Wallace, Wallace, Enon Road, Woodside Hills, Daytona, and Happy Valley Drive, and Wex- Wexwood Glen. Most of those houses are going for two hundred thousand and under. And also Enon Pines, where all of their new homes are sold a- and already occupied. Bigger is not always better, and bigger does not mean more money all the time. One of the last houses in Madison Trace sold for two hundred and seventy-three K, it appears. The building trends have changed in suburbs and all over metro Atlanta. A well-balanced neighborhood should be made up of all kinds of homes that are nice and well-kept. It should be consistent of different price points, different options, including nice townhomes. Everybody does not want large lots with huge upkeep costs, but they want a house with square footage. Nobody should try and keep others out of a neighborhood because they don't want a five-hundred K plus house. This neighborhood has always offered options and should continue to do, continue that way. Thank you. That's the only comment I have from the planner email.
Marissa, do we have any YouTube comments?
Yes, we do. So um Ms. Peggy Carson asks what type of homes in the Wallace Road subdivision? And so I think we might have answered her question earlier um during the developer's presentation, but they are intending to build single-family homes. Um and then Cutrina Lulyn said Enon Pine is a totally different product. Enon Pines is a special community, not a semi-custom, nor are they custom homes. And Kimberly Richardson, Richardson says exactly, all change is not good change.
Okay, it sounds like those two are wrapped up. I'm not sure if the board wants to get the petitioner anytime to um comment back on that, but it is at your discretion.
Uh yes, I'd like to hear the the petitioner's response.
Yeah, um I guess I would kind of echo what Mr. Cantrell is saying, even though um I do understand uh Mr. Shepherd's concerns. We did have a professional appraisal done, uh several on this parcel, so um our information is not just speculative, it's based on fact. So the fact is that it does increase property values. No, it does not create the same exact model home that he is talking about. However, um you know, these I mean, it's it's just a di- different product. The elevations that are not pleasing to his eye are pleasing to other people's eye. The if compromise, if they wanted a privacy fence, I'm like Nathan, I I thought that that would be a detraction from um, you know, the the division between Wallace Road and the houses, but we'd be more than willing to compromise, and if that's what the community wants, put up a a privacy fence. Um I understand what he's saying, and I heard him, I mean, he was the one that we've had a, we had a, and I appreciate it, we had a significant um conversation and discourse about this on Sunday. But there were other people, you know, the real estate agent, Melanie, I forget her last name, she kind of echoed exactly what I'm saying and what Mr. Cantrell said, that, you know, if you look at the finishes that are inside of the homes, none of those finishes that we're talking about are on um at Enon, Enon Pines or any of these older subdivisions, and actually, some of those finishes aren't even in some of the houses at Madison Trace. And so what we're talking about is a newer, modern product that brings in um a bit of freshness. It's it's brand new, all the, all the homes that we're proposing are four bedrooms and three baths, and they have two-car garages. So, you know, our proposal is not um anything less than that. Four, four, four bedrooms, three baths, and to his point about the setbacks, that's not true. We we've sent you some preliminary plans with the application as to what we're going to build. You have to understand, a house that would be at a five-foot setback would be fifty-five feet wide. That's, that's not even what, that's not even in the standard of what happens. So we are, most developers are not trying to build fifty-five-foot-wide house. Our houses are going to be forty-two, thirty-eight to forty-two feet wide, which brings us to those setbacks. So it would, it would, it wouldn't make any sense to build a house to any setback because that would be, it it just doesn't work, as we all know, you know, with the just with pricing and development and all of that, it it's not even feasible, it's not economically feasible. So it really comes down to, you know, um if the community wants to stay the same with the same, you know, footprint as twenty-five, thirty years ago, or if they're interested in moving forward um with, you know, something that's going to be eloquent, that's, that's going to be amenable, because as he talked about, with people being in the community for forty, fifty years, well, that's a diminishing ta- tax base as well, that's not a tax basis on it, going to increase. We, I respect that, and I understand that. And I plan on being here for a lot longer. I would love to see my value not be as flat as it is. We we're offering a a good, solid product. Um, you know, it's it's a solid product. And we, and we've met all of the criteria for compliance based on what the city, city's requirements are and based on what their plan is, their long-term plan is. We're within the, we're.
Are you, are you able to uh, or did you want to respond to the recommendations made?
Who?
Yourself.
Um recommendations being, well, I, meaning uh Mr. Shepherd's recommendations.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I did. Recommendations, let's get that clear, it's not, it's my recommendations, our community feels comfortable with that.
So we're building four-bedroom, three-bath houses with two-car garages. As mentioned, we don't have a problem adding a um privacy fence if he feels that that would be more adequate for, rather than a landscaping barrier between, tween Wallace Road and um the houses. Um in terms of the R three A zoning, it doesn't work. And the fact is, Wind Creek, Barrington Trace, those others, and correct me if I'm wrong, those are cup zone. That's the only reason how we got to cup zoning was that um, you know, based on what they're doing in the community now, so. And also, our parcel is twelve-point-five acres, not eleven-point-whatever. So the total is twelve-point-five.
Roy, but didn't you mention before that you guys are at two-point, two-something acres are going to be used for infrastructure, so you're really.
Well, in any, in any development, in any development, twenty percent of the, twenty percent of it is going to be eaten up in the infrastructure, which are streets, curbs, you know, all of that. So that, that goes without saying for any community.
And just pull straight from on on our attachment five to planner's recommendation, you only have eleven point one acres that you're going to develop with three units, that still only adds to thirty-three units. And we do resent being uh categorized as as elitist. No, the people that are the strongest uh in opposition to this are those on Wallace Road that have been there long-term residents, we we.
Okay, this, this is Nathan, no, 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 whoa, 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 this is Nathan right now, I'm going to interject. Number one, if there was a a mistype in my staff report, I will address that. Number two, um this is not a community meeting in terms of back and forth, so we need to make sure that is not where we we are devolved to tonight.
Thank you. Yeah, because I mean, I I'm I'm kind of taken aback that I I appreciate Mr. She- Shepherd's uh input, but we had other, you know, I had a couple of people wanted to get in to the, to the Zoom meeting so they could have the same FaceTime that he has. So I just, you know, I feel in all fairness that it's just unequal here, I think we should have the same amount of representation that he does.
Well, in all, in all fairness, you know, we've heard from both sides for well over ten minutes.
And it seems as though there was an outage in our neighborhood again, I'm actually at I believe there was an outage in our, in our neighborhood this evening also.
Well, if the board is, if the board has heard enough, they can move on to, they can make a motion, uh either way, if they're ready to do so.
Does anyone else on the board have a question or a comment before we make a motion? Okay. I am uh new to being a chair or conducting this meeting, and I'm unsure if I'm able to initiate a motion or not, am I?
You should call for a vote, you should call for the motion, and somebody else, if you're chairing the meeting, somebody else should put the motion on the floor.
Okay. All right, at this time, uh commissioners, if we could have a motion? Anyone have any thoughts or?
It seems certainly uh Mr. Chairman, um like there's uh uh equal, um you know, where there's great aggravation, there's great passion.
Well, I don't, I don't necessarily agree with that in this situation. I do stand that there are two, there are two um, two sides to every story. I believe this particular situation as well, the majority is 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 not in favor by a a large proportion with this type of development. I do believe that it could still happen uh with some, with some changes. Uh however, the way that it is being presented now, I have not heard, I have heard a great deal not in favor of this for several reasons. Uh no traffic study was presented, the the houses, the density, the lot size, and probably above all, the C U P requirements. If if it is allowed to go to cup, you know, they could always, you know, densely pack homes in there. That's not the case in other areas like across the street, you know, we've been fortunate enough to uh not to allow that to take place. But for consistency purposes, I believe that the overwhelming majority of the residents are not in favor because of the opportunity to take away from the community.
Ro- Rodney, can I just say one other thing, please?
I'm not necessarily. One, one moment before you do that, uh
Okay.
Mr. Mr. Chairman, and and just, and and uh please, excuse me, I don't want to be argumentative, but just tell me what you're basing your comments on to help me.
Um.
Is it from Mr. Shepherd's report?
From everything that has been shared and everything that I have heard. From, from, there's been no traffic study submitted, which is a good point. They've, they've added some, they've added a great deal of stop signs in that area, on that road particularly. Uh the addition of other homes, that should be considered, especially thirty-three, Wallace is not a big road. The price point, that's, that's subject to opinion. And most certainly, the uh, the consequences of what it would do to everyone else's property or value thereof. The lot sizes are extremely small, inconsistent with the community. You, you wouldn't go to uh, you wouldn't go down south to Tyrone or Peachtree City and expect to see something of this nature. We have to set the standard of what we want to live by.
Well, uh I don't disagree with you uh in in that at all, it kind of goes back to my, my uh comments about that ship.
Right, you don't, you can't turn on a dime. Uh, you know, two houses per acre could be conceivable. That would still require some, you know, some, some, some coordinating. But as the way that is presented, I wouldn't see how that would strike in accord with 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 the majority, let alone half of the residents.
Can, can I jump in here?
We, we've kind of passed that point, sir, no, sir. Uh we're at the point now where the commissioning board is about to make a recommendation. And again, this is what we do, we have to make recommendations, it's uh and we do it not based on our opinions, it's based on what our perception and understanding of what our of who, of of what, of who we represent, what they want, that is our job.
So, Mr. Chairman, are you asking where do we go from here?
We need to make a recommendation, we need to make a, we need to put a, a motion on the floor and move forward. Uh I'd be happy to answer any other questions or my thoughts, or if you want to have a comment or so. And I don't want to cut this conversation short, that is just our next step. We've heard from the public, we've heard from the developer.
But I'd be interested in hearing from uh from, from some of our colleagues.
Uh this is Commissioner Walters. Um I, um I think uh we did hear very much from the community, the surrounding community or representative from the community, and I do appreciate the work and effort um that they, that they put into their presentation and their recommendations for, 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 for count, for counter view. Um I, I do also recognize that from the developer's perspective, um they're, they're the, 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 the opposing or the, the other side did not get a chance to um really articulate the, the reasons for. Um so I'm a little concerned about that. Um and also, I'd like to say that um, you know, there, there's some things, and I, and I agree with, with um the community. it, you know, there, there's some things, and I, and I agree with, with um, the community, the traffic study, um, you know, that's, that's something important. It's important that we should know that. Um, and it, it could very, very much have an impact as to um, how the developer really needs to further look, look at the, the volume, and, and, and how many homes they're putting there. Um, but on, on, on the other side of that, I also want to say that we do have to really think about, how do we build a little bit more diversity um, in terms of um, types of properties, in terms of um, you know, creating um, opportunities for millennials and, 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 and people that want, that are looking for um, maybe a little less um, you know, lot size, and, 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 and higher finishes and amenities in their homes. Um, I don't think that they are mutually exclusive, and I think we need to be, be, be careful about how we're approaching that, um, that it's either all or it's nothing.
I would like to, one, one comment on, or a couple of comments on what you shared. We, we did hear from the other side, and it was at least two minutes uh, as, as to the, as to the reasons why they were for the development. I'm not sure of the, of the caller, or who, who called it in, but we did, we did hear from them. Uh, we're not able to hear from everybody as either opposed or for the project, simply because the amount of callers. But I think we did get good representation on both sides, and whatever was missed the developer, that's what we shared it. Um, and I do agree with you as it pertains to the, as it pertains to uh, the attraction to the new generations. Uh, I think we have to approach that with, you just have to be mindful of how we do things. You can't go from, from one extreme to the next. And then, in this situation, I think we're going from, where there's a potential to go from one extreme to the next. And I believe it is our role, responsibility to make sure things like that happen in a harmonious manner. In a, in a manner where everyone benefits from it, not where it's, it's one-sided.
I agree. Um, Mr. Chairman, I, I, I certainly agree, and you know, I, we, we heard from Mr. Shepherd, and, and that's, that's what I was saying in terms of, you know, we heard, we heard the opposing, and then we heard the caller. Um, I think Dana read uh, to us, uh, those who were for it, and what their reasons were. So, you know, I, 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 I didn't hear an over-pundrance of folks that were absolutely against it or for it. It just, you know, I, I heard these, uh, these two. I will say this. If someone talked about Fayetteville, my parents lived in Fayetteville, and uh, Fayetteville about uh, five years ago, started looking at, how do we attract millennials and young adults and young families? Um, and, you know, they didn't want two acres, three acres, um, and, you know, six thousand square feet. Um, so, they have uh, done some very creative um, things in terms of what they are, what they're building uh, to attract uh, young adults and young families um, in, in Fayetteville and in Petrie City. Not that they're the, not that that's, you know, the gold standard, but, but you know, we, we, we introduced them into the dialogue, and, and I just want to say that e- even old Fayetteville um, is looking at, you know, what, what, what is the way forward.
And we have to be cautious that we don't allow uh, developers or, or others from the outside to come and dictate to us how we should develop our community.
Absolutely, absolutely.
We have to have the uh, we have to have the plan in mind already, and more importantly, ear to our residents and what they want. We are, we can't just do what we want. We have to make sure we're representing our constituents.
So, can we get a motion on the floor anyway?
If I was not moderating this, I would make a motion. I would have made a motion already.
And I think I know what that motion would have, would be. Um, this is already, um, this is already, we've already um, looked at this before, and, and we, we moved it to, to today's meeting. I don't think we can.
I don't think it would be wise to push it off any further um, in, in light of the recommendations that were.
It is what it is.
Yeah. And there's always an opportunity for uh, if this is, if this, if this does not go through, there's always an opportunity for the developer to come back and resubmit an application. It, it is not our responsibility to, to uh, be that flexible. We, we have to preserve what it is we're responsible for preserving. And if some, if that means saying no, then that means saying no. And again, it's your recommendation.
Would it be, Mr. Chairman, out of order for staff to speak to us and let us know um, why they approved it?
Not at all.
Sure, the main reasons for the recommendation are, are, are pretty well laid out, I, I think. The, the focus is on, and a lot of the points have been addressed here. Number one, it's in compliance with a future land use plan, and either not in any, necessarily uh, any order, just no order that come into my brain, but number one, it's in compliance with a future land use plan, so it's not something that's outrageous. It's still a residential development, and it is a residential area. And to a lot of the points that have been brought up tonight, it's, it's appropriate, given the economic climate, given what we know people are um, buying right now, given what we know that uh, the type of families and residents we're trying to attract to our, our community, given, again, given what the um, market, market is, and to a lot of the points that were raised, you know, we, we need diversity in the community in, in terms of income, in terms of age, in terms of ethnic background, socioeconomic status, and so on and so forth. And people don't necessarily purchase huge lots and huge homes right now, whether it's, they're out of style or they're out of economic reach for people. And so, that's, those are the, that's the typical thought process for a development like this. What's appropriate for the area? You know, will, will it, will it work? Is, is it residential, is it commercial, et cetera, et cetera? Will it work in today's economic climate? Those things are all taken into consideration, as well as the, the uh, future land use map, things like that. So, the overall, that's why the, the recommendation to approve was, was given.
Thank you, staff.
I, I'd like to comment on that, too. I, and staff's recommendations were to approve it even though the set, setbacks were initially described as five-feet, the side setbacks. Their perspective is not the same as the, the planning commissioner's perspective. They look at, they look at it from a whole nother set of eyes.
That's reasonable. And we, as we discussed with the previous case, and, you know, as you are, are able to, you can attach conditions, um, make recommendations, suggestions, things, things like that. So, that is a valid point.
And we're responsible for being a, a, a reasonable voice of, of, of our community to counsel.
Right.
A very good point.
Right. Our recommendation should carry a lot of weight, because it should reflect the values of the residents in the community, especially the immediate community. And Mr. Shepherd's, I hope I'm pronouncing his name correct, was uh, in the beginning of the document that he read, he was representing all of the surrounding communities in that area. So he wa- as he, as he stated, he was not speaking for himself. He was, he was chosen to represent the area. Which is good, that we have that type of coordination and, and uh, and effort in the community. It makes these type of situations a lot easier. We want to thank the community for that.
Yeah, right.
So, if we can make this uh, put this on, on the floor.
This is Commissioner, Commissioner Wa- Walters. Was there someone else? Another commissioner making a comment?
No, ma'am, my yield.
Oh, um, based on the conversations, and based on um, all the factors that have been laid out, um, I'd like to make a motion to um, uh, deny this petition, or um, a motion to, to, to deny this petition.
Okay. Do we have a second?
So, if we don't have a second, the motion does fail.
Am I able to second this motion?
I don't believe so.
No, sir.
Does someone want to make a different motion?
Restate the motion.
I made a motion to deny this petition.
May, may I ask if, uh, may I ask an amendment to that motion?
Please.
May it be on the basis of something?
Oh, sure. Um, I did not, I, as I stated, for the, for the, for the points and reasons stated this evening, um, and the volume and the extent of community, the, 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 the surrounding community's participation, um, and their, the, the rationale and reasons that they laid forth, their concerns, and how this fits in with the current environment, um, I, I ask that this be denied. To make the motion that this, this petition be denied.
Second.
Okay, the motion has been seconded. We get a vote?
Hey, uh, Chief of Floyd. Ms. Floyd?
Yes, yes.
Yes, to deny. Uh, Rodney Hadley?
Yes.
Shannon Jones?
Yay.
Janai Walters?
Yay.
And Rachel Williams?
Yes.
Uh, the vote is unanimous to deny this petition.
All right, that are, that is all of the petitions we have tonight. We have, get a motion to adjourn?
Don't get that pretty quickly. I'll make a motion.
I second it, real quick.
Make a motion that we adjourn. It's been properly seconded, Mr. Chairman.
That's correct. Meeting is officially over.
Uh, I can be called real quick. Uh, Chief of Floyd?
Yes.
Rodney Hadley?
Yes. Oh, what did you, what are you asking for?
Uh, a motion to adjourn.
Motion, yes.
Shannon Jones?
Yay.
Janai Walters?
Yay.
And Rachel Williams?
Yay.
All right, vote is unanimous to adjourn.
Thank you very much, everybody. Thank you very much. We'll see you next month.
Thank you.
This is too much.